Good evening. We will reconvene our meeting. We were in closed session before. And we get to start with, we have students here from Bryant Elementary School, who will lead us, introduce themselves and then lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Peyton Bills, 2LF, second grade.
Kinley Wiser, in second grade.
Anna Boxlater, in second grade.
Holden Samm, kindergarten.
Mac Peterson, food.
Drake Ludewitz, Drake Ludewitz, second grade.
Drankapri swa.
Rayna from, in second grade.
Here's our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
Thank you.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on February 10th, the strategic plan update session on February 24th, and the special meeting on March 2nd, 2020, as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on February 10th, the strategic plan update session on February 24th, and the special meeting on March 2nd, 2020, as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, we have public hearing on the Hempstead High School parking lot expansion project. And Mr. Burkhart, if you'll come up and give a overview of the project, please.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Reinigans, happy to explain the purpose of this project. It's to add additional parking spots at Hempstead High School. Specifically, 39 additional parking spots will be created there. Remember, before the pool construction, you had 721 parking places. After the pool, you had 612. So if you approve this project, you're going to pick up 39 more. That'll bring you up to a new total of 651. Consider Rousha Park provides you with 50, you'll be at 701 spots. So you'd be very close to your original 721. You remember before, we looked at adding some additional parking at the bus drive, and it just didn't turn out to be very cost-effective and feasible with the underground utilities that you were going to have to replace. So, and that's also without considering the 50 in the East Church Lot that you rent. So if you consider that, you would be past what you originally had. The estimated project cost of this was $170,000. And if there's no questions, I'll be back and report the bids after the public hearing.
Thank you.
Question, Bill. Is this going to be in proximity there? The turnaround where the artwork is, the manor?
Where the statue is.
Yes. So is that going to be primarily for student parking, or is it for anybody?
I thought that was going to be staff parking in there.
There currently are staff members who have spots in the main lot where the students park. So we will move those into this, which then frees up. So they'll be student, it's a shift, but it's 30, now it's not 39 additional spots for staff, it's for students. But we will move the staff into where the other staff members are currently parked.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. A motion, please.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing on the Hempstead High School parking lot expansion project and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the Hempstead High School parking lot expansion project and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Is there anybody wishing to come forward and have any comments about this in the audience? Can you do so? Okay.
I move that the Board of Education approve the authorizing resolution as submitted, adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Hempstead High School parking lot expansion project.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the authorizing resolution as submitted, adopting plans, specification, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Hempstead High School parking lot expansion project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And that motion does carry. Reporting of the bids, please.
All right, so the bids were read and read aloud after 2:00 on February 6, 2020. The bids were well-prepared and were no bidding irregularities. We received bids from four contractors. We're recommending accepting alternate 1 and 2. Alternate 1 is putting steps from the bus drive up to that main entry. The students use that now, so this will be a lot safer for them. And alternate 2 is for using concrete instead of asphalt for longer life. The price came in very attractive and we're recommending that. So I'm going to read the total cost with all that included. So Midwest Concrete, their total bid including alternate 1 and 2 is $172,703.98. The next contractor, Eastern Iowa Escavating, $172,295.50, a difference of $408.80. McDermott Escavating, $200,205. And Ports and Construction, $243,673. IAW Buildings and Grounds is recommending Eastern Iowa Escavating be awarded the contract. And if you do award the contract, the architect will repair the contract bonds and insurance. And then we'll be back at the April 13th board meeting for you to approve that and we'll move forward. Work can start as early as June 8, 2020, and it must be completed before August 3, 2020.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve and award the bid for the Hempstead High School parking lot expansion project as recommended and further outlined in the authorizing resolution to Eastern Iowa Escavating and Concrete of Cascade Iowa in the amount of $172,295.50.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve and award the bid for the Hempstead High School parking lot expansion project as recommended and further outlined in the authorizing resolution to Eastern Iowa Escavating and Concrete of Cascade Iowa in the amount of $172,295.50. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion does carry. Okay. That takes us now to board salutes, and I do believe that there are a few out there. Mr. Sancy.
Yes, congratulations to Eisenhower Elementary School for being named a Special Olympics Unified Champion School. The recognition is aimed at promoting social inclusion through intentionally planned and implemented activities affecting system-wide change. Special Olympics says there are schools climates where students with disability feel welcome and are routinely included and feel part of all activities, opportunities, and function. This recognition was announced last week at the school concluded. His respect, we focus on inclusion efforts and theme choose to include. Congratulations to the entire building and staff.
Great. Thank you.
And I have a board salute as well. Board salute goes out to Dubuque Senior Speech Team following large group competition. Team took 29 entries to the state competition and qualified 14 for the All-State Large Group Speech Festival, which was held at Iowa State University in late February. Congratulations also to the senior team for an impressive showing at the IHSSA District Individual Defense Speech Contest held at McCoke Valley High School in Delhi on February 29. The team qualified 52 of 55 total entries for the state competition that they held March 14 at Starmon High School in Arlington, Iowa. This includes 41 entries on the varsity team and 11 entries for the ninth grade team. Best of luck to these students as they move on to state competition.
Great, thank you.
I have one.
Okay.
Board salute goes to the Hempstead High School Debate Team who competed in the National Speech and Debate Association East Iowa District Qualifier in February. The district qualifier was a double elimination event that had Eastern Iowa teams facing off head-to-head until only two teams remained. Those two teams were both Hempstead teams, Blake Homan and Brian Keck, and Kunal Chug and Samir Faruki, who led the pack at the event and have qualified to represent East Iowa at the national tournament in Albuquerque, New Mexico, from June 14th to the 19th. Congratulations to these teams on an outstanding showing, and we wish them all the best as they prepare for nationals.
Oh, that's pretty cool. Any other board salutes? All right. We have a new item that we kind of bumped to its own category, a school spotlight. So we've got someone from a school that'll be spotlighted today? Kennedy, all right, Kennedy Elementary School.
Good evening. I am Maureen Wasco. I'm in my first year at teaching at Kennedy Elementary, and I've brought some friends.
I'm Kim Becker. I'm in my 16th year teaching third grade at Kennedy.
I'm Vivian Reedy. I've been at Kennedy for nine years.
So we were invited by Tammy to share something amazing about Kennedy. And my fresh perspective, I said right away, we do something really cool with Resources Unite. And our building has, it's just a really neat partnership that we've created, so I want to share that with everyone so that we can kind of brag about ourselves for a minute. We thought it was perfect to show off. I think. Mike. Mike's under pressure.
Between the jewels, I'll figure it out.
I'm confident. You have the two X's right there.
Yeah, the IT, what could go wrong?
Kobe's here to help me.
Maybe he should just do it.
And we could just talk without pictures, is that right?
Well, we could explain why I'm wearing jeans.
Yes, that's the last button. There are three things that we as adults do to really promote and raise money for Resources Unite. As adults, we have the opportunity to pay per semester to wear jeans on Monday. It's worth every penny, and we put it in this happy box, and the money then is donated to Resources Unite. So $20 per semester per adult staff member, which adds up pretty nicely, and it just adds a little spunk to our Mondays. Also, our adult staff members in our building have the opportunity in December, we spend the part of our Friday in-service in December wrapping presents for our toy drive. And we donate all the wrapping paper just from our homes and just spend some time and camaraderie there to help with our toy drive. Also, our third thing was silent auction. Do you want to explain that real quickly, would you?
Where the staff just donates items, or goods, or meals, or, you know, whatever. They might, it might be homemade. And then we take turns and buy each other's back. And so all the money raised goes to Resources Unite.
Yes. So the background of this partnership. Years ago, Kennedy had a partnership with a different resource, but they realized that they have the ability to impact our community and wanted something a little bit more local. So they were looking at the location of Resources Unite, the physical location, we can even walk there at times. And they were also expanding at the time. So they were looking for new things to do in our community. Josh Jasper came to talk to the staff at Kennedy and about his background and focus, and everyone was absolutely fascinated. So in 2016, our partnership with Resources Unite began. What we do, our biggest fundraiser is through quarters. And we have quarter drives with our students that on Fridays, once a month, they have character dress-up days. So if they're going to dress up in, on this character day, they each bring a quarter. So we have our ugly sweater kind of pictures. And, oops, oops, sports day, sports day and western day. Freaky Friday was amazing. We had the kids dressed like the teachers, and I got to wear my big giant hoodie and headband. That was fun. Sock-ember. This is something a little bit different that was just added this year. Mrs. Schumacher's third grade class watched a video with kid president talking about sock-tober. And the kids were very intrigued, so they said, well, we can do sock-ember. And put up signs around the school and made videos and advertised it. And we, we as a school donated 1,435 pairs of socks to Resources Unite. Josh Jasper came in and they were able to present for them. And then we do our toy drive in the winter, and all the toys then go to Resources Unite as well. And here's our wrapping party that I spoke about. We get to share about $3,500 per year with Resources Unite. We love this connection with our community. We love knowing that there are students from Kennedy that enjoy these resources as well. It's just something that's a little bit bigger and a way for our students to feel the big picture. So we're proud to share this partnership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cool things. All right, visitors in open forum, please.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Any person wishing to address the board at this time may do so. I don't see anyone but regulars. Okay.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Consent agenda.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any items any board members wish to have pulled? There be none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And now to the work. Mr. Donahue, Facilities and Support Services.
The committee met last week. I have a number of things to take action on. The first is a donation from Luke Bush, who is representing the Scout Troop 11. I move that the Board of Education approve the donation from Luke Bush, Boy Scout Troop 11, in the amount of $1,617 for digitally printed boards for the wrestling room at Senior High School.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation from Luke Bush, Boy Scout Group 11, in the amount of $1,617 for digitally printed boards for the wrestling room at Senior High School. Is there any discussion?
Luke had made an observation as he traveled around looking at other wrestling venues that they, that Senior High School lacked that and a lot of history and being captured as well. There's some inspirational kind of photos, so, you know, hats off to Luke for taking that on as a project. I'm sure that'll, that'll improve the appearance of the wrestling room. And something that, as we get around to looking at that space, this will be something that can be transferred to wherever that new space looks like.
An Eagle Scout project, right?
Correct.
Eagle Scout, yes.
I have the notice on the list of the state qualifiers. Just got nice, he does that inspiration for future state qualifiers. And I believe it was 1931, Jay Berwanger. I did not know he was a wrestler.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution, resolve that the Board of Education, the Community School District, approve Hewlett-Packard as the sole source provider for the purchase of client computer equipment and peripherals to be reviewed on an annual basis.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution, resolve that the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District approve Hewlett-Packard as the sole source provider for the purchase of client computer equipment and peripherals to be reviewed on an annual basis. Is there any discussion?
This is a relationship that Kobe, when we're in our third year, if I remember right, but obviously giving HP and this relationship kind of sole, being our sole source pretty much guarantees that we get the very best pricing. And this, this relationship has really made Kobe look a lot better than he really normally would be. But we're giving Kobe credit. I probably should end the discussion at that point.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
So what's reviewed on an annual basis there is that Hewlett-Packard?
Because he's correct. We agreed that we would look at it every year to make sure it's still an appropriate contract for the district to have. And certainly, they have not failed to this point.
Thank you.
The next motion is, I move that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Conlon Construction Company for the Alta Vista Vocational Technology Classroom Edition Project in the amount of $1,486,000.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Conlon Construction Company for the Alta Vista Vocational Technology Classroom Edition Project in the amount of $1,486,000. Is there any discussion?
The only discussion would be two things. One, we did have five bids, which is always a good thing when we go to look at these projects. And the other one is that Bill Burkhart has failed to minimize the amount of words in a name of a project. Point out that I believe we need, if we need to make a motion, we can make a motion that says you can use five words.
140.
This just extends the board meeting.
You do get tongue tied, yes.
Stan, can you give us a little scope on this project a little bit?
Sure, I'd actually invite Bill to come up and do that, but usually gives our updates on that. But it's enhancing our opportunities at the ALC around industrial tech. There'll be a lot more flexibility, a classroom that actually has a garage door access. So when projects like the tiny house or other types of things are available, we've got an indoor location to facilitate that type of learning experience.
There'll be some security improvements there that may entry, the office, and you'll see people as they arrive to the building. That space that Stan spoke about was well-thought-out. There's flex space there. So if you want to get into something, let's, for example, say diesel mechanics, and you want to bring a tractor into that shop, it'll fit, it'll accept it. But if that changes in 10 years, you've got the space to change. So that was well-thought-out. And that space will take that voc-tech equipment out into its own area. It's going to be climate-controlled, it'll be a very nice environment for people to learn that, that skill set, let's see, new mechanicals, and just some general improvements there with the entry and the office.
It's a great match between what is a pretty common learning style of students at the ALC, not all students, but a pretty common learning style, the hands-on, and matching that with really what is, where we're headed with our college career readiness and giving kids opportunities to really get hands-on with things that are career-focused or potentially career-focused for students. And it often leads to, and certainly what we hear from our local employers, it's a huge need. So trying to match all those things together.
And you heard the superintendent at Facilities talk about, this is a great improvement from where we started with renovating the old boiler building. Now you've got a 100-year building invested in. So it was a good wise to pump the brakes and look at it again and move forward with this design.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And really, we've not been able to provide this kind of career readiness-type activities and vocational technical coursework at the ALC up to this point.
Well, technically, they're allowed to go back to Hempstead or Senior for participate, but that rarely, if ever happens, just based on transportation and missed classes. So you're right, to bring it on campus really makes it a real opportunity.
Opens up really what we've hoped to be able to do for a long time.
Absolutely.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the District Office Boardroom Technology Upgrades Project and authorize payment of final project cost to Tricon General Construction, Inc. in the amount of $14,289.13 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the District Office Boardroom Technology Upgrades Project and authorize payment of final project cost to Tricon General Construction, Inc. in the amount of $14,289.13 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution. Is there any discussion?
Kind of closes the work on this place, but it looks like we need to send Mike Sais and Kobe back for a little bit of additional retraining on use of the equipment. Maybe?
All those in favor signify.
I'm sorry, no, Nancy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She wanted to pile on.
Sorry.
I was just going to say that the technology advancement here has been needed a long time. And what the, the, one of the significant things about this room is not that it's where the board meetings are held, it's that it's where most of our adult learning for our staff takes place. And so now to have advanced technology really enhances the learning environment for our staff members who will come here to learn, to help kids better.
And to make two separate spaces that are just functioning too.
Yes, that's right.
So you're right.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Straka Johnson Architect PC for the Senior High School Renovation Phase 2 Project in the amount of 8% of the owner's budget for the hard construction cost.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Straka Johnson Architect PC for the Senior High School Renovation Phase 2 Project in the amount of 8% of the owner's budget for the hard construction cost. Is there any discussion?
I would just point out, for those that might be tuning in, we've identified a good process that we've used on large projects in the district, and we will follow the same here in developing a core committee. The goal is to have bids for the Phase 2 project in February of 2021. Construction to start in June of 2021, and it would be a 30-month construction process completing in December of 2023. And the total budget, including the soft costs, I think, are $30 million. For some that might be listening, thinks a 30-month construction process is awful long. It is. Just remind everybody, unlike Phase 2 where we're adding new space, but primarily adding new space to Senior in square footage, this will impact kids every day because we'll be, it'll be, I think the term was logistical gymnastics. Bill and others will be working at Senior High School as we start to get into the rest of the space, learning space at Senior. So it'll be, it'll be impacting kids every day. So we've got to be thoughtful about that in terms of the impact on the educational presence.
And Straka Johnson has a lot of the groundwork already done as the original architects from the first phase. So that saved us all, you know, six months to nine months of work.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I didn't have anything funny to say about senior, but I'm working on it. I'm working on my midterm. I move that the Board of Education approve the facility rental fee schedule for the 2020-2021 school year.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the facility rental fee schedule for the 2020-2021 school year. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And I move that the Board of Education approve the student fee schedule for the 2020-2021.
And I move that the Board of Education approve the student fee schedule for the 2020-2021 school year.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the student fee schedule for the 2020-2021 school year. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
All right, brag time. We got to make, we, one, we've determined a new project needed to expand Kevin Kelleher's Wall of Fame, because he keeps receiving all these awards on behalf of the district, so Kevin, do you want to tell us a little bit about this one?
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Ryan Gans. I'm proud to announce tonight that the Board has, or the district has received from ASBO International the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. This is, I believe, our 11th year in a row of receiving this award. What it is, is we submit our comprehensive annual financial report to this organizations who go through it thoroughly and review it, and then issue the certificate if it meets their standards. I want to thank Rick Till for his work on this. He really does a majority of the documentation involved with putting together this report. And I also want to thank the Board at this time for their support to our department for, you know, without your support, this would not be possible, so thank you, and also thank you for your knowledge of the school finance. Many of you have been on the Board for several years, and your depth of knowledge of school finance is much higher than many Boards across the state, so I thank you for that.
Well, your work is awesome, but don't go anywhere. I'm glad we can possess you with an award, the official award for your, you need to go up right there, as I've been told.
He's going to wait all day for this.
I know, for your, for your wall. Congratulations. Make sure the wall project has lovely.
Kevin, we're grateful for your work and that of your staff.
Thank you.
So for 11 years, I mean, the reality is, nothing works if the budget doesn't work. And so for 11 years, we know whether the news is good or bad, and Kevin does always tell me what I want to hear, for sure, but he keeps us on the straight and narrow, and so, again, there are many districts around the state and around the country who are in a pretty precarious situation, and thankfully, we are not, and it's because of the oversight of Kevin and his team, and sharing the news, the good, the bad, and the ugly with us, so we make good decisions.
Yep.
Great, thank you. All right. Ms. Whitman with Educational Programs and Policy Committee report.
Okay, our committee met on February 28th, and first of all, to start out the meeting, we had Gene Potts, he's a retired school administrator, was in attendance to discuss attracting new teachers and teacher shortage, and his belief on regarding involvement with parents in their students' education. So it was great to have an experienced teacher, educator, and administrator speak to us. We always value their comments. Then we had Portrait of an Educator was led by Mr. Burns and Ms. Stephens. Approximately 80 teachers and administrators in the district participated in the process to develop portrait and distill the work into the key characteristics in this portrait: relationship, continual growth, flexibility, agency, and self-care. We had Mr. Burns presented data dashboard, career cluster sections of the high school course guide, which shows the various course recommendations that are now available to students. These clusters align with the National Career Cluster Framework, and that is integrated into the students' career exploration work. Mr. Colbertson shared the data dashboard is aligned with priority initiatives, and they demonstrated to us the first phase of this, and a demonstration was given to show the scale with future and eventual goal for putting the tool in the hands of both, the tools to put in the hands of both the staff and the students to help with our career readiness and the students' path to, for the graduation. We had Shirley Horstman present at-risk programming study, and she provided us with an overview of the recommendation that came from the at-risk study committee. They had five recommendations, and this is all in work in progress yet. Recommendations in the study were grades nine through 10 programming for students similar to the ALC, more mental health services for students, multi-tiered systems of support resourced to intervention process in place for supports, summer school for middle school students, and alternative learning environment for grade seven and eight. And we had one policy, number 6216, that was recommended for approval.
Okay, thank you. And new business? I didn't have anything in my pocket, so we have no new business for the first time ever unless you want to.
Well, I can either handle it under new business or other administrative items, but just a quick update on the coronavirus or COVID-19 or whatever the, so just a few things that are happening in the district. So first off is a communication piece, is communicating with parents, staff members, when you're sick, please stay home. There's no shortcut to getting better and coming to school or to work. When you're sick is not going to do anybody any good on spread terms. Whether it's that or influenza A, we've actually had a much larger outbreak of influenza A than anything else, and so at this time, we're doing, you know, those communications. We're also talking with our youngest students, or all of our students really, about washing hands and making sure that the safest thing that any of us can do is make sure that we're following good hygiene, so washing hands, coughing, sneezing appropriately into your sleeve. We have put a number of new hand sanitizers into our elementary lunchroom, so kids can wash their hands with the hand sanitizer before lunch, doing the same in the middle and high school, computer labs, other places where principals or building nurses say this would be a great chance for kids to utilize the hand sanitizer to kill germs that might be existent. We are meeting on a daily basis as an administrative team at 7:30 each morning. Sometimes those meetings will be very brief, sometimes it'll be a little bit more lengthy to discuss, you know, the latest developments as they impact our school and our district, or if they do. As we're sitting here, I did just get an update that we have five new cases, so eight total cases in Iowa. Four of those are additional cases in Johnson County, which also on the trip to Italy, so a real common denominator there, and one in Potawatomi County, with that person that traveled to California. So, again, not, not any need to panic, just want the community to know we are watching and, and seeing what's happening and discussing that each morning. We're in close contact with the Department of Education and the Health Department to make sure we're following whatever guidelines that they might have. A couple of things that I've been asked, will we ever go to a situation where we'll have school remotely? That's very difficult for us to do. Not all students have internet access, and it plays out differently at different levels, and state law doesn't currently allow it anyway, which is why we don't ever do it on a, on a snow day, so unless that would happen to change. As we prepare for spring break next week, we do have families and staff members who will travel, and so just sharing with them any information that we have, and certainly watching what happens from the CDC and others, so that if we have people who are traveling to places that then come back and would maybe need to do the quarantine for a period of time, we're sharing that information as well. That's not something we'll be able to do, but certainly information that we can share that so the parents know that that's out there. So, again, just to rest assured that we are watching this, that we will make plans as, as needed. We've had plans about what if schools in the summer, all kinds of just what-if scenarios, but for today, wash your hands, stay home when you're sick. The, what we are understanding that most of it is spread through coughing and sneezing through droplets. We do clean our buildings each and every night with a hospital-grade cleaner. We will do an even more intense deep cleaning, as we do every year, so this isn't necessarily new, for spring break to ensure that any germs that might be there currently are taken care of at that time. So we'll communicate, we'll keep our eyes on it, we're not going to panic, we're just going to make sure that we're keeping people in the loop and keep our hands washed and hand sanitizers, and please stay home if you're sick.
Good message. Any other items?
Stay off a cruise ship.
Dad, don't go on cruise.
Go to Italy right now, later.
All right, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.